All right, welcome to City Hall in this joint special meeting between the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:35 PM on April 19th, 2021. Quick roll call, we have Member Owens, Member Perez, Member Little, Mayor Protim Hernandez, and Member Orlando present. And again, we've got a lot of people online, so I may not see Councilmember Cam Carr pop up. Do we know if he's online? And we have Member Carbone in the chamber. So we have a quorum, certified quorum. So, Madam Chair, would you certify your quorum?
Yes, Mayor Cole, all Commissioners of the Planning and Zoning Commission are here.
Excellent. So, moving forward in our agenda, are there any citizens to be heard that are not subject to one of the idols? We know?
Mayor, I do not show that we have any general public comments this evening.
All right, moving forward then, introduction of our agenda and format of our hearing. I'll ask for our staff, I think it's Martin, there he is. I'm looking through multiple windows here. Martin, if you would introduce our agenda then.
Sorry there, Mayor, we're making sure that we've got technology working correctly.
It's not you without your power of board games in the background.
And while he's doing that, just for those couple of housecleaning items, you'll notice our front dice here, we had the petitions taken down since we're moving in a direction to not necessarily have joint public hearings with all of us in the room. So it wasn't necessary to have the petitions up in the front dice, so we can actually see you guys as opposed to looking through multiple glasses, which was kind of getting crazy there. And also, just to bring everybody point of information, Mayor Protim and myself are both wearing blue today, and noticed a few people in the audience wearing blue. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and you'll see blue being worn, and some people will have certain lapel pins and whatnot to highlight that. If you're out and about in the community, over on Cullen, at our police station, Public Safety Building, you'll see a bunch of pinwheels out in the yard. Same thing over here off of Broadway, by Regions Bank and Casa Ole, you'll see the same thing, and that's just to highlight and bring awareness to it. With that, Martin, are we good?
All right, welcome to City Hall in this joint special meeting between the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:35 PM on April 19th, 2021. Quick roll call, we have Member Owens, Member Perez, Member Little, Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, and Member Orlando present. And again, we've got a lot of people online, so I may not see Councilmember Cam Carr pop up. Do we know if he's online? Not online? And we have Member Carbone in the chamber, so we have a quorum, certified quorum. So, Madam Chair, would you certify your quorum?
Yes, Mayor Cole, all Commissioners of the Planning and Zoning Commission are here.
Excellent. So, moving forward in our agenda, are there any citizens to be heard that are not subject to one of the items? We know?
Mayor, I do not show that we have any general public comments this evening.
All right, moving forward then, introduction of our agenda and format of our hearing, I'll ask for our staff, I think it's Martin, there he is. I'm looking through multiple windows here. Martin, if you would introduce our agenda then.
Sorry there, Mayor, we're making sure that we've got technology working correctly.
It's catching you without your power of board games in the background.
And while he's doing that, just for those couple, couple house cleaning items, you'll notice our front dice here, we had the petitions taken down since we're moving in a direction to not necessarily have joint public hearings with all of us in the room, so it wasn't necessary to have the petitions up in the front dice, so we can actually see you guys as opposed to looking through multiple glasses, which was kind of getting crazy there. And also, just to bring everybody point of information, Mayor Pro Tim and myself are both wearing blue today, and noticed a few people in the audience wearing blue. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and you'll see blue being worn, and some people will have certain lapel pins and whatnot to highlight that. If you're out and about in the community, over on Cullen, at our police station, Public Safety Building, you'll see a bunch of pinwheels out in the yard. Same thing over here off of Broadway, by Regions Bank and Casa Ole, you'll see the same thing, and that's just to highlight and bring awareness to it. With that, Martin, are we good? More song and dance, okay.
I was gonna say, if you can have the Jeopardy music on in the background, that would really help. All right, all right, all right. Okay, thank you. So, welcome to the joint special meeting for tonight. For the order of the agenda, we'll have a few items on. The first item is the conditional use permit for the auto wash located on Pearland Parkway. Then we'll have a conditional use permit for a two-family dwelling within the Old Town District.
Martin, would you pause for just one second? Josh, there's a pretty strong echo.
Just for the record, Councilmember Cam Carr is on the line now.
For the third item, we'll have a school within the Riverstone Ranch Development. A fourth item, we'll have a CrossFit Gym on Main Street, and the fifth item is an extension of a previously approved conditional use permit for an assisted living facility. Again, the purpose, the purpose of the conditional use permit process is to allow uses which may be suitable within certain locations within a zoning district, if there are standards or conditions that would make it more compatible with surrounding developments. The conditional use permit process allows City Council to evaluate the uses and impose certain conditions where necessary to ensure that that compatibility is reached. For that, I will hand it over to Mayor to introduce the first item.
So with that, Madam Chair, would you introduce joint special meeting number one?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a request by David Rhimes' applicant on behalf of Almond J. Jaffar, Jaffar Raleigh owner, for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for auto wash within the General Business GB District of the Stonebridge Planned Unit Development PUD to accommodate the development of a full-service express car wash facility on approximately 1.604 acres of land. The general location is 1840 Pearland Parkway.
All right, moving forward, the, into Item A, applicant information and case summary or staff report, first up. Is that you, Martin?
Yes, sir. Let me introduce Mohammed Brema. He is our senior planner, and I'll be presenting the slide deck for him. Mohammed, go for it.
Thank you, Martin. Sound check first?
You're good. We can, we can boost you if we need to.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Martin. Members of the Commission, members of the City Council, good evening. The first request is for approval of a conditional use permit for an auto wash used within the General Business District of the Stonebridge Plan Unit Development to accommodate development of a car wash facility on approximately 1.6 acres of land. The applicant proposes to develop approximately 4,200 square foot car wash facility, offering full service and express car wash. Some of you may recall, in 2017, the City Council has voted to deny a request for a car wash for this property, with the City Council raising some concerns about traffic, lighting, and noise coming from the car wash. And now, this current request is slightly different from the previous one, and I'm going to go over those changes in a little bit. Staff has received one letter of support for this request from the adjacent bank facility on the south side of this property, and we have not received any letters of opposition to this request. The next slide is the zoning map, zoning and aerial map, showing the 1.6 acre property currently undeveloped, except for an existing shared driveway, shared concrete driveway, shared with the, with the adjacent bank. Subject property abuts plan unit development, zoning from all four sides, and it abuts a daycare facility on the north side, a bank facility on the south side, and a retail strip center across the street from Pearland Parkway, and single-family residences on the west side. The next slide is the land use map. This shows the property being designated as retail office and offices and services. This proposed use is generally consistent with that designation. The next slide is a map that shows similar car washes that are located around the vicinity, and the red circle shows a one, one mile diameter from the subject property, and the blue circle is the two-mile diameter, no, I'm sorry, the two, two-mile radius, not diameter, two-mile radius. And so there's no facility within that one foot, that one, one-mile radius of the facility, but five within the two-mile radius of the subject property. The next slide is the landscape, the proposed landscape plan for this facility, and as you can see, it reflects landscape buffers on all four sides, with the development, four sides of the development with trees and evergreen shrubs being provided within that landscape buffer, as well as trees and shrubs internal to the site and within the parking areas. The next slide is the site plan, which shows the locations of the proposed car wash tunnel, as well as the vacuum stations, general circulation throughout the site and the parking areas. Next slide is our facade elevations of the proposed use, and it is a split-face CMU finish on all four sides of the building. Next slide are some renderings showing the proposed facility. Slide one is kind of looking from the south towards the facility from Pearland Parkway. Slide two, this is a closer view of the proposed building. As I mentioned, it's a split, split-face CMU building with some signs there and landscaping, a lot of landscaping in the buffers. Next slide, Martin, another rendering. This also view from Pearland Parkway, kind of looking towards the south, and you can see the bank facility in the background, and slide number four, looking directly towards the facility from Pearland Parkway. Next slide kind of shows some highlights of this current proposal as opposed or compared to the previous proposal, and I'm going to go and highlight some of those changes that were made by the applicant first. A major screen wall will be built adjacent to the daycare, matching the brick fence at the daycare center, so they're proposing to put a seven-foot tall major screening wall to separate this car wash from the Jason daycare to the north. They're also increased the landscaping area and reduced the paving footprint from the previous proposal, with additional vegetative screen consisting of canopy trees and evergreen shrubs along the entire perimeter of the site. They also enhanced landscaping along Pearland Parkway and internal to the site. They did provide facade elevations with exterior, major exterior finish, and to mitigate the noise impact of the car wash, they moved the vacuum systems inside the building, as well as away towards Pearland Parkway, away from the residences and, and the daycare, and the buildings also a mystery, which has the effect of reducing noise coming from the car wash. The next slide is the review criteria and conformity metrics, and it shows that the proposed use is conforms to the criteria, and including things like the future land use map, the thoroughfare plan, and availability of utilities. The next slide is the seven criteria for approving a conditional use permit, and this proposed use appears to conform to all the criteria. And the last slide is, the recommendation is slight, staff recommends approval of this proposed CUP with the conditions as written in the attached resolution for the City Council to consider, and these conditions include the proposed use shall be developed in substantial conformance to the landscaping, material facade, masonry, vegetative screen, vegetative screen, and master screen that in the applicant exhibits. And the second one is the vacuum system shall be always maintained inside the building, in the equipment room, or towards Pearland Parkway to mitigate the noise coming from the car wash. I think that concludes staff report, and I'll turn it back to you, Mark, or Mayor. Thank you.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, is the applicant present? Okay, the opportunity for an applicant presentation?
Good evening. My name is David Rhimes. My address is 4002 Brookwoods Drive in Houston, Texas, ZIP 77092, and I'm representing Pearland Car Wash Services LLC, the owner of the property located 1840 Pearland Parkway. The proposed full-service car wash to be named Rapid Express Car Wash Pearland will be part of the growing number of Rapid Express Car Wash locations across Texas. They are currently, they currently have 15 locations open in Texas, three under construction, and land acquired for an additional eight locations across the state. This site has been owned by Pearland Car Wash Services since 2015, and they have a strong desire to have a location in Pearland. We've been working with the Pearland City Planning for the last few months, making significant revisions to the plans, which were outlined in the planning report and recommendations you just heard, in accordance to the codes and ordinance for the Stonebridge Planned Unit Development, and compliant with the city's desire to have Pearland Parkway a beautiful and inviting gateway into Pearland. We believe the significant landscape added to the car wash by our landscape architect, Ed Wong and Associates, will add the beautification along Pearland Parkway and serve as a screening of the car wash tunnel exit from Pearland Parkway, and also screen the site for significant, for the adjacent properties, the daycare to the north, the bank to the south, and the two houses along the west side of the property, and the retail center across the street of Pearland Parkway. The seven-foot-high brick masonry wall that will be added adjacent to the daycare wall, forward along, forward towards Pearland Parkway, all along the car wash tunnel, and 10 feet beyond the tunnel will significantly help mitigate the noise from the car wash operations and visibly, and visibility of the cars for the daycare. We have added evergreen shrubs along the property adjacent to the bank to help screen the car wash for the bank, as well as additional trees and shrub along the back of the site to further help screen the car wash for the two homes that are directly behind the car wash. And currently, there is the seven-foot-high brick masonry wall in front of the, behind the homes there and the adjacent property. So, moving one of the vacuum systems inside the building equipment room, and moving the other vacuum system to the other side of the vacuum closer to Pearland Parkway, which is enclosed in a split-face CMU enclosure of what was done to further reduce the car wash operation noise for the adjacent property owners. Also, the lighting for the site will be LED, and the proposed new LED pole lights will be the required maximum height of 25 feet with downward shielding, and the rest of the building, site, building and site lighting will be reduced by time clock after the car wash business hours are over. The businesses, the business hours are to be from 7:30 AM to 7:30 PM. The owners are committed to being contributing member of the Pearland community in a complimentary way, so I thank you for your opportunity to speak to this joint meeting for the CUP approval process consideration.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, now persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Mayor Pro Tim, we had a couple of folks that submitted online, I think, one of which was the applicant who just spoke. I'll let you.
Yes, Mayor, we did have three persons who signed up to speak, but I believe they are all related to the applicant in one way or another. We did have Mr. Travis Wilson who has signed up. Are you also with the applicant? Okay, so unless they wanted to make separate presentations, we have no other comments. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just open up to those who are in the room, those wishing to speak for or against the proposed request, and make their way to the podium. Second request, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. And third and final call, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move to Item B for the Planning Commission Council and Staff for any questions, comments, concerns. First, I'll kick it to Madam Chair for Planning and Zoning Commission to weigh in.
Thank you, Mayor Cole. Commissioner Fortes?
Thank you. Great presentation. I guess I'm confused. I thought on the original overhead, it showed the building closer to the bank rather than to the property line on the north. Is that the correct layout? I was referring to the overhead view a couple of slides before these. I thought, okay, no, my bad. I, my apologies. So, the building will be located on the north. There's no fence currently between Kids Are Kids, or whatever that daycare is. My apologies again, I don't know the name of that daycare. In this facility, I know the applicant just spoke. Did he mention the fence between those two? I missed that. That would really be my, there is going to be a fence?
Yes, that's correct. There's a, there's a small portion of the fence from the daycare, the front, the corner of the daycare back towards the, I guess, the back of the property, and we are proposing from that same corner from, on the property line from the daycare forward towards Pearland Parkway for approximately 160 feet, which would be 10 foot beyond the tunnel, going towards Pearland Parkway. And that, and that basically is right next to the parking lot of the, of the daycare and not the building itself, or the tunnel.
Yes, sir, and it won't restrict the visibility that way for people exiting. So, perfect, good spot, good selection. I have no issues with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henrichs?
No, I have no further comments, since none of the neighbors are protesting due to noise, then, then it seems like it's going to be fine with the neighborhood, so I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisenberg?
No comments.
Commissioner Danzby?
I would just say, I appreciate the effort that was put into accommodating the neighbors in the neighborhood for the landowner. I think, you know, you do the best you can to, to control lighting, sound, put the buffers, put the landscaping in, and it looks like they've done everything, everything they could. If the neighborhood doesn't feel that it's going to be an issue, then, and it meets all qualifications, I'm for it then. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Earls?
No concerns for me. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boswell?
I did have a question.
I did have a question. How many, I don't know if it was stated or known, car washes are already within the area of maybe a two, three mile radius?
Well, the map on the screen currently shows five that are just outside of the one mile radius.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Kate. Of those, no, I actually, I don't have any questions. I, I second what Commissioner Dansby said, the, the time and effort that went into getting this to the standards that, that the planning department requested and the neighborhood was happy with. I appreciate that and I don't have any further questions either. Thank you, Mayor Cole.
All right, moving to city council. Anybody on council have questions, comments, concerns? And I cannot see Councilmember Campar on my thing up here, so I'm not sure if he's unmuting it or not. I don't wanna move past that, but I don't see.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the unfortunate benefit of having designed a lot of car washes. So, yeah, they're complicated. They're tough to squeeze in everything. Maybe just for clarification from staff, what is the, what is the required parking ratio? If you know off the top of your head, for a car wash? Do we know roughly? Don't have to give me the exact number. Okay, well, I guess maybe, maybe make it easier. We cannot use the vacuum stations as parking space is correct. They're gonna need to have non-vacuum stations as part of the parking count. Or employee count, employee parking.
Apologies, while I was looking, looking that up. So the parking count for a cell service auto wash is one space for every two hundred square feet of gross floor area and that includes the service bays, wash tunnel and retail areas.
But the, the vacuum base cannot be used as part of the parking count, correct?
Generally not because that, that has a tendency to be used as people that were just utilizing that, utilizing the services. So they're, they're in and out from what would normally be used.
And do we have any, do we have any restrictions in the corridor overlay for having overhead bays face the corridor, face the corridor?
The corridor overlay district requires that any opening be fully screened and that's why this area that you can see on the screen that I'm circling is densely landscaped.
Okay, I don't recall specifically the language we used. I think we, when we got with Valvoline, and I just want to make sure that we're consistent with what we're doing and not changing from each, from one project to the other. I think we had some discussion with Valvoline over, further down on Pearland Parkway. Very similar use. It's automotive. It's got an open bay where we were very aggressive about the landscaping that we had there. I believe what we did was we required them to, don't correct me if I'm wrong, and it's not as or correct me if I'm wrong, but, and this is not a requirement, but I believe we had asked them to install more mature trees so that the screening occurs well in advance of, say, a two inch tree. We, I think we asked them to put in six inch trees. Does that sound about right?
I remember that discussion, yes.
So I would just like to mimic the language that we had for landscape requirements on Valvoline to this for screening the bay because I think it's only fair to Valvoline that we hold this development to the same, to the same requirement. I would prefer to have the bays not face the road. I won't comment on the design, but if this is the design they want and we've kind of set the precedent for allowing the bays with Valvoline, I think maybe we just, I know Ed, Ed's a great landscape architect, so I know he can solve the problem. He works for me a bunch on a bunch of other stuff, so I'm sure it's not gonna be much of a problem to create a, created a, an increased landscape to more quickly block the, the bay opening. Other than that, I have no objection. I, I think the, we can, I feel comfortable moving forward with the use now that there's no one objecting to it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other?
Yeah, that's what we did on, on the one on that Valvoline is increase size of the caliber of the trees and also we did the rotation of where they come in at the front of the Parkway and out through the back on the rotation of it. And so you wouldn't have all the cars sitting on the front if they get stacked up or whatever. We, we didn't, the reason it was turned down, and I won't say why the last time, but I don't think we have that problem anymore. But anyway, you know, my God, I don't see how we miss putting one within a square mile of another one though. So that was our mistake, I guess. But, you know, if it is and it seems like that they've done a lot more with this one than what we saw on the first one that was gonna be put in down there, so I guess as far as the way the things are, I don't see any problem with it.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Mayor, this is.
Oh, there you go.
Mayor, this is Alex Campar. Can I just get some clarification here? I want to understand this diagram. I didn't see, I wasn't on council and this, I guess initially came. On the northern boundary to the north of where this, this tan or peach color is, is there gonna be a masonry wall on the northern perimeter of that?
Yes, yes, that wall is all masonry, all the way around. The entire building is. And then plus the wall that we're adding is a masonry wall. It's on the property line.
What is the height of that wall?
Is seven foot, which matches the existing walls at the daycare and behind the building at the residences.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Is there possible for us to get more landscaping on the perimeter on the northern boundary?
Well, it's definitely possible. There's a wall there, so we put landscaping and no one's gonna see it behind the wall and the tunnel of the building. There's definitely could be more.
Well, I, I think when we look at the renderings, you guys are, you guys are popping out above the tree line here and, and to the Woody Owens, Member Owens comment, we don't really need another car wash. That's not the vision for what I think Pearland needs. We've got car washes all over the city. I can't go more than five minutes down the street without seeing one. As you can see in rendering number two there, your building kind of dwarfs your wall and it kind of dwarfs your, your tree line. The, the other items is if, if you go look at some of the other car washes amongst the city, you guys are not backing, tho- those facilities are not backing up to residential. I appreciate the, the efforts on the blowers. And, and that, I guess that makes you guys feel great. I'm happy for you. But the reality is, is you're, you're literally, your southern boundary is backing up to homes and you're rendering number one. I literally see the homes in the background and I just feel we're gonna be creating a nuisance that I'm, I'm gonna get to hear about for the next two years, three years or however long I'm here. And so I, I think I have real concerns on, on noise mitigation that I, I haven't really heard a whole lot of things to, to, like, have we had a noise study on this or is there, is there a noise analysis that the, the the team has reviewed on the city side?
Um, not on the city side, but we have the car wash operations manager who's here to, has done those studies if you'd like to speak to him. He was registered to speak.
I'm not interested in hearing that. I'm just saying, do we have something somebody has reviewed that's, that is a city staffer on, on a noise study for the site?
I don't believe that was included in the applicant's packet.
Yeah, I, I would be hesitant until we, we have that noise studied, reviewed. I, I know it sounds great, but literally if you go look at the, the facilities on five eighteen, there's literally not any that are backing to a house. And this one will be backing the houses and, and my, my role as a city official is to protect our Pearland families. I take that very seriously. And that includes, that includes noise, so. I didn't hear from the applicant. Are you willing to put more trees on the northern boundary?
Sure. I mean, if you look at the landscape plan, there are quite a few trees on the landscape plan. It may be a little bit hard to see.
So you would be willing to put more trees on the, the northern boundary? Is that what you're telling me?
Sure.
Okay, I, I, I'm, based on the comments here, we need to look at a noise study and, and the applicant has been willing to put more trees on northern boundary. I would, I would, I would, the answer is not no forever. The answer is no tonight until we see those two things. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Maybe, maybe this could help. Staff, we do have a, we do have an active noise ordinance, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I don't disagree about the benefit of a noise study preemptively. I just don't know that we have expertise and house to validate the information that's being provided to us, but I do think that we have the ability to enforce a noise ordinance, and I can't remember what the decibels are at the, at the property line, but we could, if there's a noise issue, we could communicate to the owner you're in violation of the, of the noise ordinance and if you continue to violate that, then we can either require you to make some significant modifications to your building or structure to reduce the noise or we could, I don't think we could pull your occupancy, but we can find the hell out of you each day that you're making too much noise. I mean, I think maybe, maybe that kind of satisfies.
Just to clarify, there are actually two ways noise can be enforced in the city. We have a city's noise ordinance, which is simply based on a reasonable and prudent person standard and whether or not a reasonable person would, would be, whether it, it it basically conflicts with their ability to use and enjoy their property. The other is a state ordinance and that state ordinance essentially comes to the conclusion that if it's eighty-five decibels or more, it's a rebuttable presumption that it is a nuisance and then it would be up to them to rebut that. And that noise for decimal readings is measured from the property of the complainant, not the, the location where the noise is generated.
At the property line, correct?
It's, it's, yeah, it would be at the property line of the complainant, correct.
Martin, would you go, go back to the early part of the presentation? Is that northern? Keep going. Keep going, right there. Okay, I just needed to see what was on the other side of the north boundary line. Okay, good deal. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor, I'll be quick. Just, this, we had a car wash come before us previously and I was against that one for various concerns. This is, car washes are kind of been my carve out for CUPs and I had kind of been very uncomfortable. I'll say this on the record a million times. When I first started saying no to these, because I was like, what, right? Do I have to say no? But now that I feel comfortable and I've spoken to more members of the community and, and, and understand my vested interest in, in really protecting the vision of the future of our city and the entrance to our cities and so forth. Another thing is I think neighborhoods have a propensity to complain after things are approved. So that's also something that I'm taking into consideration tonight. Just again, to be consistent with my previous votes on car washes, I'm probably gonna be a no tonight.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move forward into staff wrap up.
Thank you, Mayor. So for staff wrap up, I went back to the applicant's packet where they have on page twenty out of thirty-nine, the landscape legend. If we were to decide to hold some of the similar standards that we held at Valvoline, we would look at increasing the caliber inches that are supplied on that landscape legend. For instance, the SW, which is written here on the PowerPoint slide, stands for Southern Wax Myrtles, which is a stated at a two and a half inch caliper of tree and then it's interspersed with live oaks, this LO. And those live oaks are stated to be a four inch caliper. So if y'all were looking to adopt a higher standard, that is the baseline that they are providing within, within their landscape as proposed. Additionally, there was, were comments on the landscaping that's provided along this northern property line. That is a PM, which is a Mexican sycamore and that is stated at a three inch caliper. So those are the baselines for judgment and I provide that just as, again, a baseline for y'alls discussion as you move forward.
It looks like the PM along the northern bond, boundary, if I see the legend correct, it says six inch.
It's supplying six of those is what the, what that site plan is telling you.
I want to make sure that they have, I mean, we give them instruction, we add in conditions that there's clarity there. I mean, I, I would be perfectly fine adding the, the baseline instruction to say just, let's just hold them the same standard we held Valvoline. If there's other support from council that, again, I, I don't, I'm not worried necessarily about the use, but I do I do worry a little bit about the inconsistency that comes from the council when we add, ask one person to do something that is that we feel at, the use is necessary, the approval of the use is necessary for that condition and then there's another one, another one that comes down the road and we don't ask them to do that. I just don't like that. I don't like the appearance of that, not necessarily attacking, for lack of a better word, this project. I just want the consistency. And maybe there's, I don't know if we need to amend or just give the instruction, but if there's other, at least three other council members that say they agree with that, then, then we can let them move forward to that instruction. If there's not, then they don't have to, they can move forward with what they've got without having to revise anything.
Well, let's, let's move to item C. That then puts it on the table and if we need to amend it to do that. In fact, that sounds like an amendment to place on the table and then we'll see if there's appetite to do that. That may be the best way to do it.
I agree.
Okay, so let's move, let's move forward to item number C. Councilmember Orlando, would you place that on the agenda for consideration?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash CUP twenty-one dash zero 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 three. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Don't think it recalls or needs a staff explanation. Do you want to offer an amendment to that?
I will second if anybody else wants to offer.
This is Councilmember Campar. I'd like to amend the motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to offer that we amend a conditional approval based on the noise study and the revised criteria on the northern boundary regarding the landscaping that the applicant verbally agreed to.
Do you want to so moved? Is that the end of your motion?
He made a motion to do, to make amendment for that, so he's made the motion. There a second? I don't hear a second. There a motion for, we have a motion and a second on the table, as is. You what? Oh.
Sorry, yes, maybe for clarity, since we had two items on there, maybe all I have for amendment to revise the motion so that we provide, we require the same standards for this project as we did for Valvoline as to be additionally defined by staff. Good to go.
Member Perez, excuse me, council?
Yes.
Lawrence over with the legal department. I have a copy of the CUP resolution for the Valvoline project in front of me now. It is consistent in that it says that the development of the site and permit shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, the building elevations. So we're being consistent with the condition. However, I, I can't read and I can't pull what the landscape is to ensure that the landscape plan is consistent that was provided between Valvoline and this one.
I think, I think, I think it's moot, Lawrence. I don't have, I'm, I'm alone on an island, so I think we can move forward.
And neither, neither.
I got it. I couldn't see the head nods or heads over there. I apologize for the interruption.
No, they just sneered at me. It's good.
Neither, neither, neither motion to amend received a second, so, which we're back on the table, the regular motion as presented and a second on the table. Any other questions or comments? And then, Madam Chair, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, moving forward in our agenda. Madam Chair, would you place special meeting number two on the table, please?
Yes, sir, this is a request by Jawad Zayad applicant on behalf of Jose Mejia owner for approval of a conditional use permit for dwelling to family use within the Old Town Site Mixed Use District to accommodate two duplex buildings on point-two-eight-six-nine acres of land. The general location is two-five-two-nine, two-five-three-one, and two-five-three-three Park Avenue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, we'll move to applica, application information and case summary, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, let me introduce one of our planners, Samin Bazargan, Samin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council and Planning and Zoning Committee. So the OP case is for two duplex buildings in Old Town Mixed Use Zone District. The property includes three lots that are located along south of Park Avenue close to East Walnut with a future land use of Village District. So far, staff has not received any comment in favor or against the proposed CUP. The next slide shows the zoning and aerial map, and the properties, as you can see, is within Old Town Mixed Use, close to residential and also an office building. The next slide shows the future land use indication that the property or the lots will be located in Village District, which was designed for a mix of retail, commercial, and also residential land. As you can see, this slide shows the site plan of the potential, the development. As you can see, the three lots will be joined into two separate lots that include four units, so two duplex buildings with parking, landscaping, and all the requirements as far as the building code. The next slide. So as you can see, the proposed CUP meets the comprehensive plan of future land use plan. The street along the duplex South Park Avenue was designed for a local road and has sufficient weights. The property was originally platted in two thousand and eighteen, but in order to be developed into the proposed two duplex units, they replat the property. The lots have access to water and sewer utilities, city utilities. The proposed CUP is consistent with the policies of the future land use plan and also the purpose and intent of, of the applicable zoning district. The proposed CUP preserves the character of basin development and mitigates development-related adverse impacts. The CUP does not generate hazard in and vehicular traffic. And the proposed CUP meets the standards for the zoning districts, or then variations from such standards have been requested. So the next slide. The pro, based on the criteria, the proposed use that is within the Old Town Mixed Use District is recommended for approval, and staff recommends approval for the CUP request. And the proposed resolution does not include any conditions for approval. And that completes the staff report, thank you.
Is the applicant present? Is the applicant online?
Yes, I sure am, good evening, my name is Jawad Zay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Excellent, thank you, a good evening to everybody, thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight at this meeting. I'm representing the project team for these two duplexes, I'm really here to answer any questions you may have, I do not have any additional items to present. So again, thank you and look forward to your questions.
All right, thank you, we'll move forward. Persons wishing to speak for and against the proposed request, we did receive a couple of things online, the applicant was one who just spoke. And then, Mayor Protim, you had another?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Paul Eskine, who would like to make your way to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, my name is Paul Eskine, my business is Houston Aircraft Instruments. We're located on twenty-five-nineteen Park Avenue, and I also represent the property owner, which is Passat Enterprises, which is myself, my business partner, Sada Lam, that we, we actually own the property and the land. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the proposed CUP for the two duplexes on Park Avenue. Our property's next door. The area of the Old Town Site is listed as mixed use, and I know that the Old Town area is very special to a lot of the residents in town. When we bought the land in the early two thousands, it was residential on one side and general business on the other, and the Old Town Site plan was not fully implemented. But basically now it's, it's residential and gen, and general business and such, mixed use. I believe the proposed use for the two-story duplexes would not be in line to preserve the character and integrity of the adjacent neighborhood. We disagree with the staff. You know, we, we feel that it will not be in line with the other businesses and the homes that are in the area. A few, maybe a year ago or such, maybe a couple of years ago, duplex was put on Grand Boulevard. Council did approve that duplex. A lot of us in the area thought that was a mistake. The residents around that duplex thought it was a mistake. It didn't look right, you have these two-story one, and then everything else is one-story small homes. We know a few weeks ago, a planned development was proposed to the city, just an idea from a group that wants to take that area and make homes to sell, and some single, some two-story, but more of a historical nature. And so, you know, what we see is we see different things being possible and coming in, that's kind of a hodgepodge. And, you know, instead of just a different small general businesses or single-unit homes, you have some different things here and there. Personally, we feel that we had no problem with the basic idea of the large group coming in, because it would be quite a bit of the same thing around. Where here, you have these two duplexes, and then you might have something else, and then you might have something else behind it, and then again, you have this hodgepodge of stuff, so we're in opposition of it. We've talked to some of the other people across the street, and they're concerned about the idea of having the two-story building, you know, right across, you know, from them. But anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Eskine, for being here this evening, Mayor, that is all these speakers that we have signed up for this item.
Signed up online, but we do have people here in the chamber, so I'll just throw it out as a, I guess, a first request, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Go to the podium, Rick.
Please state your name and address for the record, and if you wouldn't mind also filling out a form with our city secretary. You did? Okay, sorry we missed that, and, okay, okay, thank you.
I'm kind of confused on that, because we did sign up online Friday, I don't know how that didn't get through. My name is Rick Sims, I'm the owner of Sims Automotive. We're on the corner there on Park at Park and Pear. I also own a adjacent property across the street from the business as well at thirty-seven-oh-two Pear. Really, Mr. Eskine's pretty much mentioned most of the things that I wanted to say, but I might just add to a couple of things. But you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were here listening to the folks at Sullivan Brothers, I believe it was, with their development, and I came down curious and also concerned, but when I saw their presentation, I was very pleased and actually excited about it, and I'm hoping that, that it may come to fruition, and the thing that I liked about it was, was that it was going to add more uniformity to the area, and it was, I liked the styling of this New Orleans-style homes they were going to build, and it was mentioned that most of these homes would be in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range is what was thrown around that night. And I guess my concern is, is two weeks later now, we're discussing a duplex. And, you know, I, I just don't see someone purchasing a three hundred thousand dollar a New Orleans-style home wanting to live next to a duplex. That's, that's one of my main concerns there, and we have some nice little patio homes that were built, I don't know, ten or fifteen years ago, across the street from Paul's business. And I just, I don't think that a duplex or a dual-family dwelling goes with what you've got in that vicinity, as well as, I just think that with the things that are being discussed right now with the development, I, I feel like this is goes against that, it's kind of conflicting, if you will. So like I said, I'm excited about this development, and I think that it would bring about, I know that's not what we're here for tonight, but I'm just saying it's going to really put a nice look on the downtown area of Pearland if that was to happen. And I have to say, that's if other folks with properties want to build something there, that hopefully they would think more about trying to maintain that type of look. But also, you know, we don't have any kind of pictures or diagrams of what this structure is even going to look like, or what materials it's being built with, so forth. But again, I'm speaking out against the two-family dwelling and the lack of uniformity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sims, we'll throw it out for the second request, those wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed request. And for the third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Seeing no, no one moving in that direction, we'll move to item B, which is the Planning Commission, Council, and Staff Discussion. We'll throw it to Madam Chair, you and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Cole, Commissioner Boswell, do you have comments or questions?
A comment, I, I do echo the sentiments of the citizen, it would have been nice to see visuals to compare with what it will look like for the rest of the area. Is that something that they would be able to provide in the future, or they just don't have that right now?
The applicant still online?
Mr. Zayad, are you there?
Yes, sorry, I, I was waiting for the, the unmute there. Thank you for the question, at this time, we don't have any further renderings of the property. We can certainly provide that at a future date. But as far as the look and feel, it, it's going to be similar to the duplex on Grand. However, it is going to be on a concrete slab, it's not going to be on blocks like the one on Grand is, and it's also going to include a single-car garage within the duplex itself, with a, an additional parking spot in front of the, the duplex, too. So there's going to be two parking spots per unit.
Okay, and again, like I said, I do appreciate you going into detail about the visuals, but it would be nice to have visuals to compare it with what else will be in that area, so that's what I would want to see to know if that would be something that I would want to approve or see in that area, no further comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Earls, do you have some questions or comments?
In an effort to not be redundant, I would echo what Commissioner Boswell stated, it would have been nice to have an elevation or something other than the site plan to see some visuals. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dansby?
I agree, you know, if, if we're approving something, I want to know what we're approving a hundred percent and be comfortable about proposed landscaping, elevations, everything in between, so I, I would kick the can down the curb a little bit, or, or hold till we get a little more information at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisenberg?
I've been disappointed in the one that they put over off of Grand, I, you know, it was supposed to be something that they were going to rent out, and then all of a sudden, I, I went by there today, actually, and they've got a for sale sign up in front of it. So, you know, I, you know, it, what we saw a couple of weeks ago, what the company that's talking about coming in and building on those lots and, and doing the New Orleans style and the heights-type thing that they, they got going on, I think that's great, I agree with Mr. Sims as far as not continuing that type of, of, of building thing, is just going to put a hodgepodge of things in there and end up making it unattractive. So, you know, unless they come back with some type of rendering that, that made it look more like New Orleans style or something, I, I don't particularly care for the look of the one on Grand. And so I would be, I would be against it as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hendricks?
I think for this area, I definitely prefer a little bit more office retail kind of space or small office offices there instead of more housing, but at the same time, mixed, because I don't mind some type of what I would call affordable housing, although I'm not sure this is going to be rental in nature, or somebody's actually going to buy these, I, I don't think that I'd be a fan of rental duplexes going there, but outside of that, I, I have mixed feelings about this being in this particular location. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fortes?
Thank you. I don't want to belabor the point, but, but not having the elevations or even understanding truly what we're looking, what we're, what we're considering from a visual is, is detrimental to, to any decision I, I would make. We just spent a long time discussing in detail, you know, the, the car wash, and we had lots of visuals there, I just felt like this was lacking. And the only other thing that I have that's And the only other thing that I have that's troubling me, I don't understand what put this as a CUP in Old Town Site. But I, I can call staff tomorrow and find that out. I just, I just didn't know why this wasn't under there or fit into the regulations. I missed what kicked them into the, what triggered them needing a CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm also troubled by everything that's already been mentioned. The, the development we saw a couple of weeks ago, I feel like is going to bring something special to Old Town. And, you know, without a visual, a better visual of this at all, not knowing what it's going to bring, it's, it's, it's hard to want to approve this in any way from my point of view. And I'm not going to belabor any of the points, but I agree with everything that Spence said already. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Moving forward in our agenda, City Council, questions, comments, concerns?
Could I follow up on Commissioner Fuentes' question? I was curious as well, just kind of the, the process by which we're, we're doing CUPs for the Old Town Site District?
Duplexes are specifically called out in the land use chart or as a conditional use allowed in this district?
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, and kind of going to, a lot of the comments that have been said about what, I, I think we have this mixed-use district fundamentally because we have a vision for what this district looks like in Pearland. And there's obviously been a lot of planning. We, we saw that a few weeks ago. We saw that there was a plan put together on kind of presenting a vision. And I don't, yeah, fundamentally know in whose vision this is just kind of a smattering of all different kinds of stuff. And we just say, oh, we just kind of allow it because this is a no man's land or anything goes versus like, we have an affirmative vision for this being a really quality district for our community that we want to have more control over. And so, yeah, I find myself feeling very unfavorably towards this development.
Questions?
Mayor, I'll just note that upon the next-gen item, I'll be abstaining from the vote. The architect that worked on the project is a frequent client of mine. I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on it for that reason.
Questions, comments?
I'll add to that. It's a vision thing for me as well. I mean, I think also the way that Sullivan came forward doing a workshop with us, first getting our feedback, I think was a critical component of the process for them potentially moving forward. I think that the lack of visuals for this make it difficult to consider with the overall vision that we have in mind, I suppose. So I would have issues with this as well. And Commissioner Henrichs' comments, I think I share some of those as well, just kind of not knowing if this would be a rental or a purchase situation here. So, yeah, I'm probably against this as well. And it goes down to the vision. I think we can do better for the Old Town Site.
Councilor Rowens?
Yeah, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion on this and what we did the last couple of weeks and what we thought was going to be brought in there with the three hundred thousand plus homes, whatever. They did make a statement that they would be more than glad to come in and do a visual and bring it back to us. Maybe if we should postpone this until we get to take a look at that and see what the visual aspect was and see if it might blend in with whatever we had looked at previously or it's not going to blend in, be able to make a better decision on this. So if you don't mind, I think that's one of the things maybe we look at is working with them to bring in a visual.
Maybe we can.
A week from now.
Maybe we can talk about that when we get to item C, but that's certainly something to consider. Councilmember, you have anything?
Sir, can I just ask staff if, if we do postpone versus no on the CUP, does that mean, a no would mean that they would have to go through the process again, pay fees, things like that? But if we postpone, they would not, you just clarify that?
Correct. We would just bring it back based on whatever input you gave the applicant that you'd like to see. And once they brought that back to us, we would bring that forward.
Since it is a resolution, it can be on a normal gen item.
Yep.
Councilmember Kamkar, I don't see you specifically on the top of my computer monitor here.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody else before me got to it, but what I would, what I would just want to add is, I think for the staff's benefit and to make this productive, I think in the Old Town Site, we probably need to bring visuals. I think this is a new day in the city and our expectations are increasing. And this applicant, I think, has done everything that was probably asked of them to the letter of the law. But they probably had no chance after what the Sullivan Brothers presented a few weeks ago. And that's not their fault. But we are asking people to do more in the city and we should. So I would just ask that the staff, if we have more Old Town Site applications, that some kind of visual is going to be a part of that. And I want to thank the, the two business owners for taking the time to come out here and share their thoughts. It's very clear that they have been longtime Pearlanders who, you know, been benefactors to the city. And they want to have something special there. And I don't blame them for, for that. And so I want to thank them for coming down here and sharing their thoughts.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Then we'll move to staff wrap up.
Thank you, Mayor. Smeen, I've got this. So, thank you. We hear the, we've heard several different conversations about whether to require visuals, whether to have a cheap no, whether to have an expensive yes. So I appreciate the comments there and we'll, we'll provide, you know, those to future applicants. I think that because we have had some discussions about visuals being brought forward and the fact that we do have a change potentially coming up with our process for both joint special meetings and joint public hearings, just to keep that in mind with our timing. So if this were to be pushed forward to a different agenda, it would go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission at one of their dates. And or it could go straight to council. So just keep that in mind since we are in a moment of transition here.
Yeah. Obviously, this would be the public hearing, they had their public hearing, so that it would just be a resolution. If that completes the staff wrap up, I'm going to move to item C. That way we can put this on the table. If we want to postpone it and move it, then we can quietly do that. Member Carbone, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Conservation Possible Action Resolution R twenty twenty-one dash CUP twenty-one dash zero 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 eight. So moved.
Second, Hernandez.
We have a motion and a second. No staff report needed. I'll throw it open to the team that we had heard about a postponement. Do we want to postpone this and allow the applicant to come back? If so, we'll need a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we postpone this. Darren, do we need to do a hard date in the future for postponement?
Generally, when we, when we can, it's preferred. But in this particular case, we don't know how long it's going to take. So I think it would be to the next, to a future agenda, at which time the applicant has the information the council's requesting.
So moved.
Can I not discuss? I just want to say, what's the guidance? What are we telling them to? We're telling them to bring back a visual, but what's the? In my mind, I'm like, I don't know, I'd be hard pressed to think of the visual that gets me to a yes. So maybe others on the council differ, which is fine, but maybe that'd be helpful for the applicant.
So I'll say, so I guess I'll say this. We have a postponement and we have a second? Did we get a second on the postponement? And then we, we, if I understand, a postponement is not a debatable motion?
That is correct.
Okay. So then we have to vote on the postponement. Now, if the postponement doesn't pass, then we're back to the.
That's fine. I mean, I don't care either way. Maybe let's all get a Robert's Rule primer, but yeah, I'm good either way. I'll be voting no.
So we have a motion to postpone and a second to postpone. That's not debatable. Madam Chair, or Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Mayor, I did not catch the second.
It was Councilor Rowens.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Member Carbone?
No.
Say that again, please.
No.
Member Kamkar?
All right, just for clarification, is this for a postponement or is this for the up or down on this?
To postpone it to a future agenda.
We can postpone for, yes.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez is abstaining?
I'll vote against the postponement.
No.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
No.
The motion carries four to three.
Postpone. Correct.
To postpone. Yes, sir.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda.
And if we wanted to put that back on the table, it'd be somebody that would have to. Because I think we're headed down a slope that we'd like to talk about it. So from a, a Robert's Rule order, one of the four yeses would have to make a motion to bring it back.
Are you talking about to bring it back prior to receiving that information?
Yeah, tonight.
Oh, if you wanted, it could be a motion to reconsider that, yes. By the, by the members who lost on that vote. I mean, by the members who won on that vote, correct. By the, one of those four members would have to make a motion to reconsider.
That's just to open up discussion, potentially to provide some guidance?
Right.
I think, I think that's the, I think that's the key. Once we have a motion and a second on a postponement, we can't debate.
Right.
But there probably should have been some opportunity to discuss it. So I'm not, who voted? So you're talking about one of the three that, or one of the four?
One of the four on the prevailing side would have to make the motion to reconsider.
This is Kamkar. I'll make the motion to reconsider.
Who has the second? Anyone? Anyone second or?
Not yet.
We're just, we're just talking about just providing guidance so that they know what to come back with, not to reconsider the postponement.
Right.
Second, Hernandez.
I think that's, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider. We'll call for the vote on the reconsideration.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
Reconsider. Okay. So we now have it back on the table. Let me just say this. If we've got to move to postpone or table or something very quickly, just by way of housekeeping items, let's respect our body enough to have some open discussion and dialogue about an item so we can shape and form and talk. And applicants can get guidance moving back before there's just a call to postpone. That way, we don't have to do this again. And we, and we give members an opportunity to get some guidance of what they'd like to see.
Understood, Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I thought that was covered in the, the previous discussion, but I just, just out of respect to the applicant, wanted to make sure that if there is any question that they had clarity, if the applicant is still online, do you have clarity of what we are asking?
Yes, I think I do. It sounds like you guys are looking for, you know, maybe a frontal elevation of the unit or maybe like a 3D rendering of sorts?
Some, some visual elevation would be nice. Yes, to see how it incorporates in to the overall area and with whatever's existing there currently. And maybe it'll give you an opportunity, go back and look at what came before us previously from the other developer that was mentioned. And you'll have an opportunity, I think, to meet with staff and they can provide you that information as well. I will say to Member Orlando's point, it will be a tall hill to climb for a yes from me, kind of as you described it already, but I just wanted to provide the opportunity to make sure that you had that clarity. So I, you know, understand your point, Mayor.
And Councilmember?
Yeah, Member Hernandez, if I may, I, I think I'm just saying, it's not just that we want them to provide a rendering. The feedback that we're giving, or some members are giving, including you, seems to be, if the rendering doesn't come back and look the way I want it, I'm still going to be a no. So I guess what I'm saying is, in fairness to the applicant, tell them what it would take. Because my answer to them is, I, I can't imagine, and I'll go into it with an open mind, but I can't imagine what it would be, being a duplex in that exact spot that would make me want to be in favor of it. So Commissioner Eisenberg said if it was more New Orleans style. I don't know what that looks like exactly. But it, like, if there are specific terms that people have up here that would change them from a no to a yes, I think that's in every, the interest of everyone's time to share.
Yeah. And Mark, maybe you want to clarify what your cheap no, expensive yes comment meant specifically? And maybe the applicant will give us clarity if he wants a vote tonight or not. Yeah.
I was, but the explanation was just to provide a better rendering of what the intention of the development would look like.
But if they're going to spend money to make a nice rendering and there's no way in hell it's going to pass, then why make them do that? That's the cheap no thing. So I'm saying cheap no, I'm a no. I'm saying if other people could flip, then tell us what it would take to get you to flip.
Right.
For example, would.
We was given an opportunity on this, you know, like I said, you know, previously that, you know, two weeks ago, wherever, however long ago it was, we looked at what was going to be an opportunity to put in a three hundred thousand dollar plus home, two-story, old home from New Orleans style home or whatever in there. And now you've got another one coming in. We don't know what that's going to look like. And it may be, you know, that, or it may not be that. And so I guess the thing that, you know, if I got the property and I got its own, a three hundred thousand dollar home in there or whatever, I'll put in a duplex for a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, sell it overnight. So I mean, you know, you're, you're mixing the two up of what you looked at previously and what you wanted it to look like in the Old Town Site, walkable Town Site in there, in, in the development of it. And now you don't know what's going in there as a duplex, you know? And, and so it'd be good to see what the rendering would be or would be, okay. Is this a, you know, a hundred thousand dollar duplex or a seventy-five thousand or whatever, you know? So I just think, without seeing that and just, you know, being able to see that, I think we're sending out a mixed message of what it was when we saw everything. We've got a seven oh vote on everything over there in the Old Town Site for that. And now we don't know. So that's my only point to it.
I would agree with Luke. I, the, the lots are narrow to begin with. And now we're taking three lots and putting, combining them and then putting two duplexes on there. So that density is even higher. So if I close my eyes and imagine the best-looking duplex, that's still a very hard, a very hard yes. So I don't want them to go spend twenty grand with, to paint us some pretty pictures that we can debate whether we can hold their feet to the fire on the pretty pictures or not and get back up here and the business owners still aren't going to like the density. And I'm going to still have trouble with the density. So I guess that's the clarity. If we can hash it out tonight and it's, then that gives the applicant clarity. You know, it's a, it's a big gamble if you want to go spend the money on the rendering.
Yeah. In addition to that, real quick, I, and I don't have a vote on it, but I've got to say, in, you've got this, this whole block here, you know, the other applicants are looking at extending the alleyways. What happens behind these two or three lots? Do, do they extend the alleyways along with the other applicant? Does the other applicant at their cost have to go buy these, or not buy, purchase, but go adjacent to these with the alley? I mean, I, there's a lot of conversation around that that needs to happen. And who's going to be, you know, responsible for that? Now, all of a sudden, you've got these front loaded, the rest of the block would be rear loaded. How does that look? Are we thinking of setting a standard or not? And all that needs to be talked about.
When they showed us those pictures, I mean, everybody here has.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilmember Little?
Well, I'm on the same page with Councilmembers one through three over here. It's going to be a hard sell for me to change my mind. I don't think elevation drawings are going to change my mind. We represent the citizens and the citizens are against it. So I'm probably going to be a no either way.
Councilor Kamkar?
To Member Carbone's point, I just want to, this seems really apropos, that we really need to look at the UDC, especially in this area. Unfortunately, we can't unsee the Sullivan Brothers' presentation. Every P and Z commissioner, I think, mentioned the New Orleans style. And if we bring somebody in. And if we bring somebody in here who's not going to do that, but maybe they put a $325,000, you know, home there, you know, are, are we, are we hurting ourselves by being applicants here that just don't have a chance? And I think we have to be honest, as you said, the front load pushes the rear load. Not having a rendering really hurt this application, but there probably wasn't going to be a way it was going to go. So I'm just trying to think more globally here, that this problem is not going to go away. And so we need to kind of think how do we want to proceed, you know, for the next two, three, five, 10, 15 years? So.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, with all of this input, does the applicant have anything that they would like to say or ask final with knowing that it's a tall hill to climb? Do you feel comfortable taking this and coming back with something, knowing that you have that, that tall hill ahead of you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And, and full transparency, guys, it, it's going to look very similar to that duplex on Grand, with a few exceptions. It, it's not going to be on blocks, it's going to be on a foundation slab. It's going to be slightly wider, and it's going to have that, that, the single unit garage on the first level in combination with the living space. So, so it, it's going to look very, very similar. I, I don't want to lead you guys in a, you know, a, a different direction. And, and, and it sounds like, I just, I, I'd hate to put in the, you know, the upfront money for an elevation, knowing there's a strong chance it is going to be opposed, because it's probably going to cost several thousand dollars. I, I, I guess. Yeah, I, I guess that's just where I'm at. A, a, any, any other advice or guidance, I, I greatly appreciate it. But, but, but it sounds like it, it is going to be an uphill, you know, a, a very steep hill to climb, so to speak, with this project.
I mean, that's, I think that's what we're hoping to communicate. That, that's your call, it's a free market. Go do what you want, but, but I think you have a better feel now and, because I, I think if it does come back and it looks just like Grand, I, I don't, I don't think you get the four votes.
Right. And the applicant can always just withdraw if we decide to postpone, right? It doesn't, you don't have to.
Yeah.
What we're saying is you don't have to proceed with anything if we so choose, or we just want to take a vote.
Well, what's on the table is, is back to the original motion. The application as presented. We did have a reconsider vote, so that is on the table. Do I see any other questions? No one moving in that direction? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Then we're back voting on the original motion, or the original resolution.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
All abstained for the reasons I stated earlier.
Member Owens? Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
No.
The motion fails zero to, zero to one.
Say again?
Sorry. Sorry about that. Motion fails six to zero to zero.
Six to zero to one. Six to zero to one. All right, moving forward in our agenda. Special meeting number three. Madam Chairwoman, would you place that on the table?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request by Jim McSherry, GPV Group applicant, on behalf of Pasadena Independent School District owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for a public school within the single-family residential one district to accommodate a new intermediate school, grade seven through eight, on approximately 20.96 acres of land. The general location is 8750 Hughes Road.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, application information and case summary and staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. For this item, I will introduce Mohammed Brema again to present this case. Mohammed, you have the floor.
Good, Martin. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council and Landings Only Commission. So this request is for approval of a conditional use permit for a public school within the single-family residential district or R1, known also as R1 District, accommodating intermediate school for the ages of, for the grades of seven and eight, on approximately 20.9 acres of land. So Pasadena Independent School District is the applicant and proposes to construct approximately 160,000 square foot, two-story intermediate school to accommodate those grades for approximately 1,200 students, grade seven and eight. Some of you may recall that in 2009, this, a similar request was made for a different site, located at the 2100 block of Highland Meadows Drive within the Riverstone Ranch subdivision. And after a lengthy discussion during that public hearing, the city council voted to postpone that request indefinitely to give the school district time to consider their options and, and work out solutions to the issues that were presented at that time. And these issues were including accessibility to the school site through the Riverstone Ranch subdivision. And so since that time, this, the district went back and reached an agreement with the developer to swap a, this current site that we're looking at today with the old site and, and came up with this 8750 Hughes Road, which is have direct access to this, this Hughes Road site. Excuse me. This new site provides direct access, better access than the previous one. And Hughes Road, as you know, is designated as a secondary thoroughfare. Also, this site reduces a lot of traffic trips that will have, and busing as well, that will have to take place throughout the Riverstone Ranch subdivision. Staff has received one letter of opposition for this request from a lady called Nyle Dorsey. You may already got a copy of that. She was expressing concerns about traffic in the area in general. And we also received one phone call in opposition for this request, and the gentleman indicated that he will be speaking during the meeting. And then a couple of phone calls as well for additional information. The next slide, it's the zoning, zoning and aerial map, and it's showing the property being undeveloped. It is part of the Riverstone, Riverstone Ranch subdivision, zone single-family, R1. The property is surrounded by the R1 zoning district from all four sites. There are homes located on the north side, as well as the east and west. On the south side, there's a portion that's still not developed, as well as the, the southeast portion as well. So there are some homes that are budding this district, this site. Across, across the north side, obviously, it's across East Ranch, there are some homes on the other side. The next slide is the future land use plan, and it's, this property designated as low-density. The comprehensive plan, however, policies, you know, allow for schools and parks and community facilities to be located close to, or within residential neighborhoods when separated by buffers. And so with that, this proposed use is consistent with that, with that policy and, and the designation. The next slide is the overall site plan. That was presented by the school district for this new location. Reflects the development of the site, including locations of the school building, as well as the parking areas and athletic fields, as well as the general circulation of, of the site. Just kind of looking, comparing this to the previous location that was big for the school. This site has direct access to Hughes Road, which, as I said, designated as a secondary thoroughfare. It does reduce the, the traffic for people to navigate through the subdivision to get to the school. The school is obviously closer to Hughes Road. It also, the majority from the site plan that you see, the majority or most of the traffic will be handled going back directly to Hughes Road. There are small amount of traffic that will be funneled through Riverstone Ranch Falls, that's the street that you see on the right side of the screen. And to mitigate the negative impacts, such as noise and things like that and glare, toward adjacent property, the prop, the, the applicant has provided a 30-foot landscape buffer that's along this, the, the sites that are budding residential homes. And I, I've got all this, I think it's on the next slide, Martin, these highlights that I was talking about. And once we move to the next slide, which is the review criteria and the conformity metrics, the proposed use conforms to the review criteria, thinks it's the future land use plan, that refer plan, and availability of utilities to the site. The property is undergoing plating process at this point. The next slide is the approval criteria for conditional use permit. This site meets all of the criteria for approval. And that will lead us to the recommendation, staff recommendation. Staff does recommend approval of this new CUP for this new location with the following conditions. First, the proposed use shall be developing substantial conformance to the layout that we have seen in the previous slide, as is presented by the applicant on that site plan. And, and just to make sure that the traffic, circulation and things like that just remain the same. All funnels are handled through Hughes Road. Second recommendation is a minimum six-foot masonry screening wall that shall be provided along the south and west side, west property lines, abutting the residential zone properties. That's another recommendation this staff is making. And the last one is that landscape buffer adjacent to also this residential zone property shall include large shade trees with a minimum two-inch caliper measured, a 12-inch above the root ball shall be provided with the total caliper inches equal to at least one inch at each 10 feet along the property lines. So this is only will be along the sites that are abutting the residentially zone properties. And this is also consistent with what, with the language that we have in, in, in the UDC. That, I think that concludes the staff's report, and back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Welcome.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate working with Perilian ISD. My name is Jim McSherry. I'm the project manager for GPV Group. And where our offices are at 2121 Sage Road in Houston, Texas. We also have here the principal of Thompson Intermediate School, Tanis Griffin. And we also have the superintendent of schools, Deanne Powell. She also lives in this neighborhood. And we also have the construction department, Kevin Fornoff and Shana, Shauna Egno. The, the school district has demonstrated an extreme amount of cooperation with the city. We negotiated, the, we negotiated a land swap with Meritage, the developer, at a significant cost to the district. It is, it is a better site, we agree, from the site we had back in 2019. And then just to clarify, that this is a replacement school from a school that was damaged during Hurricane Harvey. And if you look at the site plan, which we just lost. This was like a year and a half ago, and it's like, that's like 20 years in COVID times, so.
And I didn't mean to hijack your presentation, but I wanted to under, I wanted folks in the audience, I want to make sure everybody on council is aware, you can see where the cursor is on the screen. If I understand correctly, the school district owns this property for many years. Development's come in around it. City has kind of had some problems with the school being located that deep in and the traffic throughout the neighborhood. And a land swap was then generated between the ISD and Meritage Homes to put the school out here off the road, making less traffic within. And if you'll drive by the, the site where the school district owned the, the previous property, it's been developed and you got in a street, you know, on that property today. So I, I wanted to put that in context for you on the map. That was not in the presentation from staff.
I appreciate it, thank you.
It wasn't in our packet. And so I wanted to make sure that the public, as well as those in the room, got a chance to see that.
So as you can see, looking at the site plan, we have one-way traffic exiting and entering at the Hughes Road driveway. We have stack space for over 150 cars. Our traffic study says that suggests that we probably wouldn't have any more than 50 cars in there at one time. The, we have, you can see, there's a landscape buffer of, on the west side and the south side, which is also on top of that, there is a 20-foot utility easement for water and drainage as well. So you really have 50 feet between the existing houses that are to the southeast. And that, the piece of land to the west is undeveloped right now. Meritage still owns that piece of property, and they have the opportunity to build homes there as well. The, the, the drive that enters onto Riverstone Falls, that's used, that'll be used primarily for buses, and then also for like the food service employees that come in. So the, very minimal use there. And we've complied with all the landscape requirements. As you can see, there's on the, on the east side, not only is there the trees that are there existing where the sidewalk is, we also have an extra tree buffer on our property line as well. And the same thing on the north side of the property. And all of the recommendations that Mohammed had for, we're perfectly happy with accommodating those. We've already have those in the documents. We have the masonry fence that's on the east and south sides. And also, all of our trees on that south and east side will be the, you know, two inches or greater caliper. And we have us, our, barring approvals and everything, we have a anticipated completion date for this project in March of 2023, and with those kids coming to the school in August of 2023.
Does that complete your applicant's presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll move forward in our agenda. The person's wishing to speak for and against the proposed request. It's also open to anyone, I, I don't think, did we have any online? The only online request was from.
Here's those just.
Right, right. So do we have anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good to see you tonight.
Ready to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record, and we'll put three minutes up for you. If you keep your comments within those three minutes, we'd appreciate that. And as the mayor said, thank you for being here tonight.
My name's Marie Flickinger. I, my address, this 10302 Sage Brook. And I'm happy to be here. I haven't been here for quite a while, and I see a couple of old, familiar faces. Last time I was here, I was attending a meeting because residents from Green Tea were very upset about the school and where it was going to be built. And I think we really need to commend Pasadena School District for everything they did. And I know it cost them a lot of extra money to change locations. They've done it. It was not an. And I know it cost them a lot of extra money to change locations. They've done it. It was not an easy thing. I also had been here when Meritage wanted to build those subdivisions there, which some of you may remember, and people in our community did not want it. And there were a lot of people who opposed it, but I supported Meritage's project, even though the traffic goes through our area. On my way over here, it was about a twelve-minute drive. Four of those minutes were at Pearland Parkway and Hughes trying to get through. And I know that that's a little bit of a problem. I think the developers probably should have done that project before they left the area. But I do think that, that the improvements that the school district is going to make in the area will be a good positive thing. There will be a number of kids from right around Riverstone in, uh, Pearland that will be attending the school there. And I think it'd be a good asset to Pearland. And I thank you for working with the school district.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it.
Any others, um, any, there we go.
State your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and council members. I'm Deanne Powell, Superintendent of Schools for Pasadena ISD, twenty-ten Coventry Bay, Pearland. I am a resident of Pearland, but also a proud member of the Pasadena School District. Um, we have South Belt Elementary, so we're good neighbors and good partners to you. I want to thank you and your police department. I know they came through and helped us in a big way, um, after our Santa Fe tragedy. And so we have, uh, definitely had great partnerships. And when we heard about the discontent of our South Belt, uh, members that were at Green Tea and some of even our Riverstone Ranch friends, uh, we got together as a school district and a school board and decided we were going to do the best thing regardless of the price tag, which was quite hefty. So we look forward to moving the students of Thompson Intermediate to this new site. When I became superintendent in twenty fifteen, we had a bond. It was approved in the twenty seventeen bond. So you can imagine the phone calls I take on a daily basis. When is my baby's school going to be finished? They're in fifth grade. They need that intermediate school. So of course I get those calls and I say, we're working together with Pearland and we're going to get that on the ground just as soon as possible. So just to let you know, uh, we have about nine hundred to a thousand students currently. We know we're growing. Uh, but we don't think we will exceed the capacity in which that building is intended. So again, we look forward to being good members of Pearland, uh, good neighbors, of course. Uh, Thompson Intermediate's an outstanding school doing outstanding things. And again, we want to be at that location and serve the students in that community. When I moved in five years ago, Meritage promised, they didn't know I was superintendent when I was buying that house, but they promised me my babies could go to the new intermediate school that was going to be in that development. They even showed me it on the map. Again, my kids were older, so I knew that we were still working toward that. Um, but I've got neighbors that know who I am and they're knocking on my door asking me, when is the school going to be built too? So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for working with us. And we look forward to being good neighbors again, not just at South Belt, but at Thompson Intermediate. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Powell, if I could just say, thank you so much for being sensitive to the concerns and needs of the, our Pearland residents.
Absolutely. We bought that land, someone said, long time ago and, uh, at a very good price. So this was unfortunate. We had to do this, but it, it wasn't developed yet. So I understood once the homes got in there, we need to be sensitive to our community's needs and our Green Team friends. Uh, we only have about two blocks in Green Tea that go to Pasadena ISD, but we still want to be good partners, not only to the city, but the folks that live in the neighborhoods we serve. So thank you.
Moving, uh, anybody else wishing to speak for or against, uh, the proposed request? And we'll ask a third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Saying none, we'll move to item B for our planning commission, council and staff to ask questions and discuss. Madam Chair, I'll throw it to the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do any commissioners have comments or questions at this time?
Just one, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Fuertes. Again, I have the same question. Uh, I just, I'm just not sure why this was thrown into a CUP. Uh, we've had other elementary, intermediate and high schools, uh, go in and I don't recall them, but that could be my lack of memory. So just whenever staff has a moment to explain or I'll call tomorrow and get that answer.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Eisenberg. Uh, you know, uh, I think this is a great thing. I mean, this was always in the plan for that area, had to always have, uh, Thompson Intermediate, a, a school in that neighborhood. Uh, they moved it not only, if I remember correctly, not only of the concerns, uh, of the Green Tea, there was concerns of the people that lived in, in the subdivision there about if, in, in case of an emergency or something like that, having one way in and one way out to the school back there in the very back of the subdivision. So, uh, you know, moving it back up there to, to Hughes Road, uh, you know, it puts it out on the main thoroughfare. Uh, you know, as far as traffic, I don't know if there's a school one that we can plan for traffic around a school. Uh, I mean, I, I, I go to East and pick up my grandson every once in a while and it's a, you know, you, you got traffic over there. Any, any school's going to have traffic, it pick up and, and drop off time. So, uh, you know, that's, to me, that's just an inconvenience that, that we're just going to have to put up with. I mean, this is all for the education of our kids. And, uh, and, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this is well overdue. It's, it's time that we let, uh, Pasadena get on with this, get it, get it on the ground and, and, uh, continue educating our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisenberg. Um, any other commissioners with questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Hendrix. Um, I am totally for this. Anytime that we can improve the education facilities of our kids, we should do it. And the fact that they have two entrances in and out of this complex and it's in a great location, there should be no reason to not vote yes for it. So I hope that our council does. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. Hearing nothing, nothing further. And Mayor Cole, I don't have anything. Um, we're done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move it to, uh, city council. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I'll just quickly say this came up as one of the first items of, of me being on the city council. And it's, I'm coming up on my second year anniversary, so certainly appreciate the amount of time and effort that's gone into this. And really glad, um, that this was able to work for all parties involved. My parents are in Green Tea and a lot of their friends and they're very excited by this outcome and I'm, I'm glad it worked out for everybody. So thanks again for all the cooperation and, um, sacrifice to make it happen.
Member Owens?
Yeah, yeah, probably. I guess Kevin, you and I were the only two, uh, when we was trying to get the footprint changed from, uh, uh, Alvin Community College, San Jack. And Marie knows that. And so, and, uh, as a part of that, San Jack came in and, and worked on that property up there on the front. So when this, all this came up and we were talking about it, I said, well, wait a minute, you know, because I was getting a lot of heat because I live on Country Club in Green Tea. And so people were concerned about that and certainly looking at it from, from a distance that, uh, putting the school at the back end of the property really didn't make a lot of sense, you know, for the number of kids going to school and the traffic that would have been going through the residential area to get to it. And so, um, our hats goes off to, uh, Pasadena for doing that and working together. And Marie, your help and also superintendent getting this done to have it up in the front. Uh, it made quite a bit of, uh, difference for a lot of people. Uh, but one question is on the building, I've been noticing getting, uh, calls from the people that are in those townhomes on Country Club says that, uh, uh, dirt is about three feet higher now than what it was original on it now. So they're looking at saying, hey, this is going to flood in over to us. Of course you got that HLMP or, uh, easement through there and then that little drainage ditch, which don't carry that much water. So at some point, you know, we need to look at that or whoever and see what the elevation is. And, uh, and get back with us on that and we'll satisfy the rest of the people. But I appreciate it.
Councilmember?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One, I think maybe, uh, to maybe offer an assist, I think every school requires a conditional use permit for the zone. So that's why, uh, that's why this is here. Uh, Dr. Powell, if I could just kind of address you, uh, for a second. One, I, I've lost count of the amount of schools I've designed. It, it is, it's combat sport. It's very difficult. Uh, it's, each of them have their own unique issues and you get a lot of the NIMBY, um, mentality. So it's, it's challenging. Um, I think y'all could have steadfastly held to the site that you were at and tried to make it work. And, um, you know, I, I think there's probably some other tools you had in the toolbox that could have, uh, I wouldn't say forced our hand, but make things a lot more uncomfortable for you if, if you had chose, uh, chose to do that. And certainly a lot of other school districts do, um, you know, just because I've done so much of this, I, I, I want to offer you my sincere appreciation for your leadership in this because you did take on quite a heavy load to switch the site. I know it costs your, uh, your district quite a lot. I, I'm sure that you got some pushback from your trustees or at least a few of your trustees as, as, as far as the, uh, the expense. So, um, it, it's, it's simple for us. We go from one meeting to the next and we say, hey, great. You've, you've made some changes here. You've accommodated our, addressed our concerns. Um, and we kind of vote hopefully for it, uh, but we vote upon it and we move on about our day. But it, I, I think there's a few of us that, that, uh, are in the development arena that are on this council. And I think we recognize just how hard it is for you to have been to be where you are right now. Uh, for as quickly as you've been able to do it as well. I think it's a quite a feat. Uh, I, I have no concern with the use. It looks like you have well more than ample enough Q to address any TIA concerns. Speaking with staff, I know your TIA is in review. Uh, if I could just offer maybe my suggestion to staff that we, uh, we kind of, we, we, if there's some subjectivity in the recommendations on the TIA, let's just kind of be as, uh, let's try and relieve as much burden as we can. I, I've certainly left turn lanes, but roadway expansions and stuff like that. I mean, they're, they're, they've borne a lot of expense thus far to address our traffic concerns. So, um, you know, I, I certainly, we don't have the right as council members to comment upon the TIA, but I hope that, um, I hope we try and understand as we all go through the permitting process, just how much y'all have done and how cooperative y'all have been to this concern. So thank you very much for doing what you've done. Um, and, uh, I will gladly support this conditional use permit.
Member Kamkar?
Uh, yes. Uh, just to echo, uh, member Perez, uh, thank you to the, the school district. I know that, uh, people buy land years and years ahead and, and making these changes, you kind of don't plan for them. So, um, I, I just kind of want to grow off of member Owens's, his comment. Uh, for the staff, has a drainage study been reviewed for this project? Obviously they have detention ponds on the site plan we're looking at, but, uh, what is the status of that with regards to this application?
So we have our, uh, engineer on the line, uh, Parviz, will you give an update on that?
Sure. Good evening, uh, Castlewoman, Kamkar. This is Parviz with Engineering Department. Uh, I just need to make a statement to prevent any future confusion about this site plan. Uh, the actual site plan, the permit is under review, does not have any detention on it. The detention has been provided as part of the subdivision on the right hand. Uh, I forgot the name of the subdivision, not the Riverstone Ranch, the other one. And as you can see on the left-hand side of the site plan here, there is this area called Stormline Connection. There is a fifty-four inch pipe stop out for this lot. So there are conveyance and detention being provided and they will connect it to that. We've been in communication with LGA, the mud engineer, and they have provided us the documentation and response about that.
What, what mud, the Parviz, what mud is that to their western boundary?
Oh.
Do you know that?
Five oh none.
I don't have the mud name or number, but it is part of the.
Five oh none.
Uh, so, okay, let me ask this differently. Parviz is, are you telling me that the, the outfall is essentially through the mud facilities? That, and that there's going to be, I guess, upsizing or workout, uh, between the mud and, and, and the school district?
The, the outfall is already sized for this development. Like I mentioned, it's a fifty-four inch, uh, pipe.
Okay.
So there was about thirty acre of land left over from Riverstone Ranch and they consider that outfall for the whole development. This is school and the small subdivision on the right hand and the small subdivision on the bottom of this school. They consider the capacity and the conveyance for those.
You know, um, here, here's what I'm going to tell then. I, I have been counseled not to give very much, uh, comment. If I was a school district, I would probably want the drainage study conducted. Uh, we're in a post Harvey world and you, from what I can tell on Google Earth, this site is only about half a mile from Clear Creek. Uh, there's major work that's going to go on in Clear Creek for the next five to ten years. I'm generally uncomfortable with the size, a, a site of this size that doesn't have some kind of a certification from a, a, a body saying that, um, we are comfortable with this. Um, I know there's detention ponds on there, but I don't know the depth of those. I don't know any of them. It would really, really behoove, I think, the school district to make that effort. I know that nobody wants to do any more work on this. But, um, your neighbors, uh, every time it rains, uh, during hurricane season will point to you. And as member Owens already pointed out, if your three feet, if your neighbors are three feet lower than you, um, they're, they're going to start pointing fingers at you. So, um, that's my only counsel. Uh, I can't force that issue and I don't think I would get four people to vote on that anyway. Um, but I think that would probably be pragmatic.
I'll just remind council, uh, zoning, it has nothing to do with the actual criteria of engineering. It's, we're talking about the dirt. They then have to perform all of their site plans, site studies, hydrology, utilities, roadways, TIA, everything else, just like anyone else would do. Zoning comes first. They have to then do all of the other. Um, and so I, you know, we're here to talk about the use and the specific use of the CUP today. I think it's well, uh, versed with our staff that they understand drainage and the importance of drainage. And so I'll, you know, leave that to staff to do on their overall site plans. No telling the volumes and volumes and volumes of paper that, that, and I know we're electronic, but in a, in a virtual world, the volume of lands that will be going into the city for all that. I think it's well noted, council member, about drainage, but that can't be tied to zoning.
I hear your comments. Um, I just, I know that, that, that the district has done a lot to be good neighbors. Um, sometimes the, the best problem is a problem that you see way ahead of time. And, uh, I, I don't think that the neighbors are going to come and look to the mud district. They're going to come to the city council and say that, um, they moved a bunch of volumes of dirt. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm only one of seven. I'm not a drainage professional, so I'll, I'll leave that to the city and they can decide what to do with that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments amongst council? Nope. All right. Uh, with that, we will move staff wrap up. Are you, uh, concluded?
The wrong button there. Uh, Mayor, the only thing I would add, uh, is just in addition to what's already been said about the conditional use permit requirement. Of course, uh, you know, we can't tell one R1 piece of lot from another R1 lot. So it's always good to take a look at these, uh, when we have the ability to review them for conditions of approval.
With that, we'll move to item C. Uh, Mayor Proton, would you place that on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R two zero two one dash CUP twenty-one dash zero 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 nine. So moved.
Agreed. Move a motion in a second. We've had staff report. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Uh, for reasons stated above on the drainage study, I'm going to go ahead and abstain.
The motion carries, uh, six to one.
Moving forward in our agenda, and I will say, uh, to Pasadena ISD Superintendent, thank you for your patience. Uh, obviously, living in the neighborhood, you know, the importance of, of working with the city and the neighbors and how we got there. But I just appreciate your, your time and effort and. time and effort and, uh, the sensitivities to traffic and all the different concerns around it. Uh, I would ask our staff to continue to work with Pasadena ISD as they submit plans for permitting, that we can move that along as quickly as possible so they can get this school under construction and open for business and get those kids in it and all that kind of stuff. So we look forward to that and we look forward to this school being open in Pearland. We'll move forward in the agenda. Joint special meeting number four. Madam Chair, would you, uh, place that on the table?
Sorry. Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Um, this is a request by Kristen McGinn, applicant on behalf of Total Energy Investments LLC owner for approval of the conditional use permit for a gym health club for physical fitness indoors only within the light industrial M1 district to accommodate a fitness facility inside an existing 7,000 and... Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, but we're getting feedback.
Yeah, all of a sudden I hear myself. Um, an existing 7,071 square foot warehouse on approximately 1.13 acres of land. Uh, the general location is, um, 3222 Main Street. Thank you, Mayor.
Moving forward in the agenda, we'll move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let me introduce Florence Baku. Uh, she is one of our planners here in community development. Florence, take it away.
Okay. Call trick. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Martin, and good evening, um, members of the city council and members of the planning and zoning commission. So this request is, uh, a request for approval of a conditional use permit for the establishment of a gym slash, um, health club, um, in the light industrial district. Um, the proposed gym and health club will occupy, um, uh, 7,071 square foot warehouse on a 1.13 acre lot, um, in the, in the R1 district. Um, give me a minute. Thank you. So the proposed, um, health club is going to be in the leased space, um, and it's in an area zoned, um, light industrial district. It's surrounded by other light industrial zone facilities. And so moving on to the next slide, um, it has an underlying land use of, um, industrial. And so the proposed gym and health club is a less intense use than the uses that are supported by the light industrial land designation. So here, um, is an aerial showing the existing warehouse that would be converted into a gym as part of a larger site, um, as you can see, but the area, uh, indicated with the red boundary is, um, the area that is going to be leased out for the gym. Um, this is the site plan showing the, um, the leased area in context of the larger, uh, piece of land. Um, I'd like to note that since this is going to be a change of use, the, 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 um, gym would be required to comply with parking and landscape requirements for the proposal. Um, the next slide is, uh, shows the general layout, um, that the applicant is looking at for the warehouse piece conversion into a gym. And, um, then staff has reviewed this request to ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan, the thoroughfare plan and other city requirements. And staff has determined that, uh, that, the plans meet the requirement of, um, the city regulations and the city's comprehensive plan and thoroughfare plan. Again, staff has also reviewed this request to ensure consistency, uh, with the approval criteria outlined in the UDC. And, um, as you can see, um, the proposal meets all the approval criteria outlined in the UDC. And so based on that, uh, staff has determined that this proposed, um, gym and health club meets the approval criteria and is consistent with the requirements of the UDC. And that staff recommends approval of the CUP request. And that concludes staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence. We'll move towards applicant presentation. Is, uh, Kristen McGinn online?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Thank you all for the opportunity to attend this meeting. Um, I'm very excited to be, um, a new business owner in Pearland. I have been, um, in Pearland my entire life, but, um, recently purchased CrossFit Iron Sharpens Iron. Um, we have been around since 2011 and we are excited, um, and looking forward to expanding our gym into this new facility. I'm able to answer any questions, uh, that interview, any of you may have.
Thank you for that. We'll be, uh, back to you with any questions, uh, later on. So thank you for that. We'll move forward in the, um, in the agenda. Persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request?
Mayor, we have no one on the, uh, who signed up online, but we do have two members in the audience. Um, so we might want to ask if they're both indicating no, that they have no comments. So.
All right. Second, uh, person's wishing to speak for or against. And a third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move towards planning commission, uh, staff and council for questions. Madam Chair, I'll throw it to the P and Z.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, any questions or comments? For staff or the applicant?
Just quickly, Commissioner Dansby, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, just quickly, um, you know, I, CrossFit seems to fit well with light industrial areas. I think this fits in that, um, you know, if, if they were looking at an M1 or heavy industrial or something like that, it'd be more difficult. I don't think it would work as well, but all up and down, uh, 35, uh, you know, this is, seems to be something that would fit reasonably well in that market. Uh, uh, so I, I, I'm not opposed to it. I think it'd be an interesting addition to the, to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Fortes is here. Um, in light industrial areas, it, it, it is difficult to blend. My, my first blush at this, I thought this was going to be a kid's gymnastics thing and I was just panicked because, uh, you know, we don't want to make something like that. But, but as a CrossFit, I think Commissioner Dancing makes a great point that, that these do blend in. I've seen him in other areas. He's, he's absolutely correct. They do blend in well. Um, it's adults coming here and, and those trucks bothered me at first, but I realized that must be part of the, uh, part of the, the gym as well, gym site as well. So as long as they follow the city rules from that standpoint, good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing else. Mayor Cole, I'm going to give it back to you. Thank you.
Moving to city council, questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, just quickly, Mayor, um, I, I, I just wanted to kind of get a sense of, of how this is done when we're, we're preparing these reports. So I, and just, I guess upfront, I don't think I have a big problem with this or anything, but just like one of the criteria was whether or not this is consistent with the purpose, um, with the purpose of the, and use of the zoning district, which it, it doesn't like seem like it really is. I mean, I guess it wouldn't, it, it's not an issue and this is kind of where CrossFit gyms are, but it, it doesn't seem like this is a light industrial use. So I guess, does it go into your consideration of if I wanted to build a new facility on a, on, let's say 3200 right here, that wasn't, um, that didn't already have something there? Like, would that give us more pause versus, oh, we just want to redevelop something that already exists?
Right. So part of that criteria is to measure, uh, the surrounding uses and to see if there's compatibility issue present either on the site or in adjacent sites. Uh, with the land generally being, uh, un, not well-developed around there, uh, it makes it a little easier to say that this doesn't present, uh, a huge issue. Um, there is a techs dot, uh, office that is located on the same site, uh, that has, uh, that's that little building here that has the, uh, driveway around. Um, so that is the other use that is on the site and they mainly use that as an office use. Uh, so it's similar in nature, uh, or the intensity of the use that they're proposing is similar in nature as to what's on the site. So i- it's not only taking into consideration, uh, the uses that could be there, but the uses that are, uh, present to the site or to the area.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I guess maybe the follow-up question to that would be if somebody with a more traditional light industrial usage wanted to come into that 3200 lot, would we then, I mean, I guess they, they could do that by right, right? I mean, they would just come in and do it. And, you know, if, if it's kind of noisy, the CrossFit gym knew what they were signing up for when they, when they put their roots down there.
Correct.
Okay. I, that's all I had. Thank you.
Question. Any questions, comments, council? Seeing none, moving that direction. Staff wrap up.
Uh, Mayor, I don't believe I have anything, uh, in addition for staff wrap up. Thank you.
Okay. We will move to item C. Member Little, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration impossible action resolution number R2021-CUP 21-00010. So moved.
Senator Hernandez? We have a motion in multiple seconds.
Kamkar can't see me.
And, uh, so no staff report. Uh, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to the zero to adopt resolution number R... R, uh, 2021-CUP 21-00010.
All right. Thank you. Moving forward in the agenda to new business. Um, let's see. Madam Chair, would you put this on the table, please?
Yes, uh, Mayor Cole, I also wanted to point out that, um, Commissioner Fortes is recusing himself from this one and he has turned off his camera and his microphone.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, this is a request by Alan Mueller applicant on behalf of G and G Partners LLC owner for approval of extension of a previously approved conditional use permit to allow an assisted living center within the neighborhood services district on approximately 9.61 acres of land. Uh, the general location is 3205 Dixie Farm Road. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Before we move forward, I will let, uh, for transparency's sake, about four years ago, I did a zone change on this site, um, residential to, uh, neighborhood services. Um, obviously I wasn't on council or mayor and when it came back for the, uh, CUP, I wasn't involved in that as, as well. Uh, so I don't have a conflict in it moving forward or, or currently, but just wanted for transparency's sake to let people know that. Um, I shouldn't be voting on it unless there's a tie, but, uh, um, uh, but did want to let people know I will conduct the meeting on it. And for transparency, I just helped with zoning on this land about, like I said, about four years ago.
Uh, Mayor, kind of same thing. Um, about that same time after they, uh, got their zone change, uh, I assisted, or my firm assisted with, um, feasibility study on the project. We're, we're not continuing on it. We haven't done anything, uh, for the project, but, um, I think because I participated in providing some consultants, I'll keep with my standard of, uh, recusing myself from, uh, from this item.
I believe early. Yep. Moving forward, we will go to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for this report, I will hand it back to Florence. Take it away.
Go away.
Thank you again, Martin. And so, um, thank you, members of the city commission and members of the planning and zoning, um, city council and members of the planning and zoning commission. This is for an extension of a perfectly approved CUP for an assisted living facility in the neighborhood services district. Um, the general location is 3205 Dixie Farm Road. And so this, uh, CUP was previously approved, um, in, um, May 2020. And so it's, um, the CUP is set to expire on May 11th, 2021. And this is because a building permit for the use has not been approved within a year of the date of approval of the conditional use permit. And so the applicant is, um, requesting an extension to the expiration of the CUP and the proposed expiration date is, uh, May 2022. So moving on to, um, the map, the subject property is zone neighborhood services. And then it has an underlying land lease of retail offices and services, both of which support the, the assisted living use. And so just to recreate the, uh, request, this is a request for a one-year extension of the expiration dates for CUP 2000005, uh, from May 11th, 2021 to May 11th, 2022, as permitted by the C, uh, by the unified development code. Um, staff, uh, it's of the view that this, um, request meets the requirements of the UDC and staff is therefore recommending approval of the proposed extension of the CUP with an expiration date of May 11th, 2022. That concludes staff report. Thank you.
And, um, moving into the applicant presentation, is the applicant online? Josh, do you know if we have an applicant online?
Mayor Cole, this is Florence from the legal department. Uh, I know that the new business is listed as Alan Mueller is the applicant. Uh, earlier today, uh, just before the meeting, I received information that Alan Mueller was not the person who requested the extension. It, it may have been somebody on behalf of the applicant. However, uh, Mr. Mueller, who is who submitted the original application, uh, a, a little over a year ago. So I, I'm, I'm not positive who it is on behalf of the applicant, but because Mr. Mueller is there and the, uh, agenda, if it was looking to see him, he would not be the appropriate person to turn to.
Okay. Well, we also received, um, online, Mr. Tony Giuliani, requested he would be online. Is, uh, Mr. Giuliani online?
Yes, he is. Mr. Giuliani, your microphone has been unmuted? Mr. Giuliani, are you there? Mr. Giuliani, you've been unmuted if you'd like to speak.
I think he's talking to the president.
Mayor, he's there and he's unmuted, but, um, he, he's having technical... Mayor, he's there, and he's unmuted, but either he's having technical difficulties or, or.
Well, if we have any questions for him, if I understand it, I mean, this was approved, like I said, it was approved almost a year ago. Let's move forward with planning commission, council staff. We have questions, we can ask Mr. Giuliani. Is that fair? So moving forward, Madam Chair, you and your commission have any questions or comments?
Let me see. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, does, does anybody have questions or comments for staff? Or for Mr. Giuliani when he, when he returns? My, my question, I think, was, does it matter about why the building permit hasn't been approved? Is that a question I can ask?
That's a question you can ask staff as well.
Staff?
So I believe that they were working through text dot issues last, I believe I heard, but Florence, if you have additional information, feel free to chime in.
Thank you, Martin. And so, according to the letter they submitted, they haven't been able to submit for building permits because of, because of COVID and issues with financing.
Okay.
Excuse me. This is Mohammed Burim, a senior planner. Yes, the applicant indicated that they have not been able to secure financing because of the COVID issues and things like that, but they're, they're in the process of getting that through. So they want to make sure that, that the CUP doesn't expire before they get that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giuliani, are you there? Sorry, I thought I heard somebody. Commissioners, does anybody have questions or comments? I think that, I guess my only comment would be that I would like to hear from Mr. Giuliani for, if I was, if I had a vote on this. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, moving forward, city council, questions, comments, anyone? Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll move to staff wrap up.
I had nothing additional for wrap up.
Moving to item C. Member Owens, would you place that on the table for consideration? There it is, there it is. You didn't hear me? All right, we'll do it again. Consideration possible action resolution number R2021-CUP 20-00005-1.
Agreed.
We have a motion in a second. We've had a staff report. Any questions, comments from council? None, moving forward. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R2020-CUP 20-00005-1.
And this will, we will adjourn our joint special meetings at 9:04 PM. Now workshop.